January twenty six, two thousand twenty three, Watcom County Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Call the role, but you know if you're here. Robert Bartel, Jared, Robin Barton, that's me, I'm here. Adul Desmone.
Yeah.
Jim Hansen. Jim Hansen. Stephen Jackson.
Here.
Julie Jefferson.
Here.
Kim Lund, not be here. Dominic Masary.
Here.
And Scott Van Dale.
Here.
Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now it's time for department update. Assistant Planning Director Steve Robert would give us the department update.
Yes, really, really briefly tonight, our next few topics, our next meeting, we have our annual business meetings, we'll be walking through really quick. Our rules, our business tools, if there are any changes we might want to make to those, or make sure we get this cleaned up as we kind of kick into the twenty twenty five update later this year. Make sure we have all the, all those ground rules kind of in place for everyone. And then what will be the next meeting, we'll be talking about wind energy systems, we have a recommendation from the Climate Action Committee that will be bringing to. Thank you.
Now is the time for open session for public comment. Tammy, would you take care of that?
Sure, let me just check if there are any attendees here tonight. We do not have any attendees for public.
So. Now it's time for Commissioner comments, and I wanted to start out, I am sure that commissioners all know that. This is Rob Bartel, Commissioner Bartel's last meeting with us, hopefully for just a while, till a position comes open. As we all know, his district line moved just a little bit, which left him without a spot. I want to say how much I appreciate Rob and the work he's done, the comments he made, very thoughtful. Very well thought out and very appropriate, and I will miss that. What we're going to do now, we're going to go back to Steve Robert, and he has a few things he'd like to say.
I'd like to thank you for your service, Commissioner Bartel. I've done four, four years of service to the community, and you all appreciate that. Well, sure.
Are there any other Commissioner comments?
Yes, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Commissioner Bartel as well. And also let you know that you may not know this, but the planning commission has a very elaborate pension plan that you'll be able to start benefiting from immediately. So. Hope you enjoy that.
Thank you.
The security detail of the whole thing, everything you need.
All right, any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Masary.
I just want to say I really appreciate working with you on the planning commission. I think that we potentially sat next to each other every meeting, other than the Zoom meetings, so. I've enjoyed having you as my seatmate as well, so, thank you.
Stephen Jackson. Or Commissioner Jackson.
Okay, I'll join in that as well, and admittedly, I'm gonna say I feel partially responsible, having been on the four-person redistricting committee. Had I known where you lived, I would have pushed harder to keep the boundary where it was. But. It's been great working with you, Commissioner Bart, Bartel, and I really have appreciated your voice on the commission. And I think you found your voice, to be honest with you, the first year or so, I think you were getting your legs under you, and then. I think it was Commissioner Han Coop. Left and. I remember you saying that you were going to resign yourself to speaking up more, and you did, and it's been really great, you know, it'll be a loss, and I was very just, I was out. Bitching, actually, I looked at my phone and saw the email, and then it was your last meeting, I, oh no, so I'm. You'll be missed, so it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, and I won't hold a against you.
We'll put you back in in ten years, so.
And just, yeah, like, it's, it's just been a real pleasure working with such great people, and I know that county, you know, is in great hands, and. You know, all of you come together and have good input, and oftentimes, you're speaking up well before me of what I'm thinking, so again, just. Just can't say enough, a proud man to have been able to serve alongside all of you and work with you, so, thank you, and wish you all the very best.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I didn't get to work with you for too long, but I appreciated the opportunity to work with you and learn from you and listen to your voice and. Help, help build my courage to speak up. Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen. I've joined the meeting. Okay, the other commissioners. Then, all right, we'll close, Commissioner comments. Go on to approval of minutes from the December eight meeting.
I would beg the motion to approve the minutes to the December eighth meeting. Second that.
We have a motion to approve, a motion and second to approve amendments from the December eight, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing no additions or corrections, Tammy, would you call the role, please?
Sure. Commissioner Masary.
Yes.
Mr. Van Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yes.
Commissioner Desmone.
Abstain.
Commissioner Hansen.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Upstain.
Mr. Jefferson.
Yes.
Mr. Barton.
Yes.
Okay, that is six yeses, so that carries.
Okay, so we are into our meeting, and Lexine Long is going to speak to us about Growth Management Services and. Give us over, overview on GMA and comprehensive plan update process.
Hi, thank you, just a second, let me get up my presentation. All right, do you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. So I'm Lexine Long, I'm a senior planner with Growth Management Services at the Department of Commerce. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come speak with you today, you're at the start of your periodic update process. And so this is just the start of the conversation, and we're looking forward to working with you throughout the process. Today, I'd like to go over some of the underlying basics and discuss some of the most important elements for you to consider. My hope is to leave you with a good understanding of the process overall and some critical tools to help you get the process off in the right direction. My slide's not advancing. Let's see. Okay, there we go. So the Department of Commerce touches every aspect of community, economic development, planning, infrastructure, energy, public facilities, housing, public safety, crime victims, international trade, business services, and more. We have hundreds of programs, services, and funding opportunities, all focused on strengthening communities. So tonight, I'm going to be covering an overview of the Growth Management Act, roles and responsibilities in local planning, comprehensive plan, your periodic update process, some of our new housing element requirements, and then hopefully leave enough time for a question and answer. So first, an overview of planning and the Growth Management Act. So I'm going to start with why you would want to have a plan in the first place. What does a plan, be it a city comp plan, a water system plan, or a transportation plan, do for you, and when do you need one? We plan to be sure resources are used efficiently, so your community, communities' needs are met while preserving future resources. Planning creates the framework for future development. Assist in placing measures that might mitigate impacts of climate change, ensure economic development and vitality, promote better use and conservation of natural resources, prevent land use conflicts, and sets you and your community up for success. So land use planning in America is done primarily by local governments, although it affects fundamental interests at all level of, all levels of government. Planning is then primarily governed by state law, so every state in America has a planning framework. The Growth Management Act is one of several state statutes affecting local land use decisions in Washington. These statutes that were adopted when the GMA was enacted exist within a larger policy framework that governs how land use and development decisions get made. Other statutes, such as those governing special purpose districts, transportation planning, water law, the tax code, and others also have a significant effect on planning. All of these occur within the framework of both state and federal constitutions. So the legislature adopted the Growth Management Act in nineteen ninety in response to concerns that uncoordinated and unplanned growth, together with a lack of common goals, expressing the public's interest in the conservation and wise use of our land, posed a threat to the environment, sustainable economic development, and the health, safety, and high quality of life enjoyed by the residents of this state. So the GMA provides a statewide planning framework to address these concerns. It requires local planning that is guided by state law and is regionally enforced. It can be found under RCW thirty-six seventy A with advisory recommendations in WAC three sixty-five one ninety-six. The GMA has fourteen overarching goals to guide the development and adoption of local comprehensive plans and development regulations. These goals are not listed in order of priority, and some goals use stock words like encourage, while others are more strongly worded with action words like reduce, maintain, or protect. All goals should be looked at to ensure mutual compliance and reinforcement between policies and regulations. I'll just briefly touch on roles in local planning. Planning involves a range of participants, such as county commissioners, planning commissions, staff, general public, and many others. All of these roles are usually united and shared mission of land use planning and policy. Commerce's role in local planning. Our unit, Growth Management Services, is the primary state-level contact for requirements under the GMA. We provide technical assistance to help local governments comply with the GMA and implement their comprehensive plans effectively. Commerce regional assist, assistance planners help jurisdictions with things like getting started with our cold reviews, providing guidance on the GMA and reviewing drafts. I'm the regional planner for your area and welcome your calls or emails anytime you have questions. Commerce is not a regulatory agency, but proposed and final amendments must be submitted to us so that we can review them for compliance with GMA statutes. This also allows time for review by other agencies, such as the Department of Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, among others. These and other state agencies should also be contacted early in the process so they can work with you on your proposals that may impact topics and regions under their purview. As mentioned, many other state agencies are also involved in the planning process. So next, I'd like to touch on the upcoming requirements for a review of your comprehensive plan and development regulations under the GMA. So the GMA requires that jurisdictions review and revise, if necessary, their comprehensive plan and development regulations every ten years. Your next periodic update in Watcom County is due in twenty twenty-five. This update primarily means two things, incorporating new statutory changes and incorporating new on-the-ground facts. However, you're not starting from scratch, and it is a review of your existing plan and building on your existing plan. This gives an overview of the periodic update process at the local level, and it kind of represents the basic overview of steps that a local government will take. Some of these steps can take months, if not years, and some steps will happen concurrently, so this is not as linear as it looks. I'm just going to highlight a couple, three kind of critical practice tips for your update. The first is, is related to the review component. We have update checklist that lay out all the things you'll need to consider during the update process. A completed checklist will also be the first deliverable for your update grant, the grant is something I'll talk about in a second. Completing the checklist will make sure that you've covered everything and allow you to measure progress throughout the process. It's a very important tool to keep small statutory changes from slipping through the cracks. Second, when you're noticing and adopting ordinances and resolutions, you want to make sure that your findings reference the update requirement. Also, when the process is over, you need to make sure you declare in your recitals that the update is complete. Noting completion in the final action is critical if there are any legal challenges on the update. Third, when you're done, you need to notify us that the, that you consider the process complete. We track the update process for the purposes of grants and loans, so we need to know where you are in the process. I'd also like to highlight that public engagement is a really important step in the overall update process. Okay, so this might, this is what a potential timeline for a jurisdiction with a twenty twenty-five update might look like. I know that staff at Watcom County have already been working on a detailed scope of work for your update. So it's spring twenty twenty-three, you're kind of kicking things off, and then you should be complete by June of twenty twenty-five. Grants will be available two years before the statutory deadlines. Periodic update grant award notifications and instructions will be issued to twenty twenty-five jurisdictions, this spring and summer. We have to wait until legislative session and the budget is finalized before we can officially get those out. You'll be eligible to request grant reimbursements for all periodic update grant work beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. But we expect funding to be available following the formula up here. I do see a hand, would you like to jump in with a question?
Yeah, thank you, Lexi, this is a tool, Desmone, I, my question is about the whole idea of grants. If it's something that's mandatory and required, why would we have grants to fund it?
Well, the state, you know, recognizes the value in the GMA and the comprehensive plan process. This is also a incredibly sort of time and staff-intensive process, so that these grants are funding from the state to, to help you do this well. This is also an incredibly sort of time and staff-intensive process, so these grants are funding from the state to help you do this well.
Maybe if I can add, Commissioner, there's my, I'm not sure if your question was, why is there a grant process? It's not a competitive grant generally? Is that kind of where you were going?
Oh, yeah, it's... Yes, so these are grants that are allocated based on this formula of your population size, and yeah, it's not a competitive grant. We just need you to fill out an application so we can get a contract. You will get money if you fill out our application. We have money allocated for each jurisdiction. So yes, it's not a competitive grant process.
So Lexine, I'm not picking on anything, but I just have to say, since funding is available, has any county ever turned it down?
Some smaller counties have, or not counties, cities. Sometimes smaller cities do turn down funding just because either they don't have kind of the staff or, you know, might not agree with the process of the GMA. But most jurisdictions accept our funding to go through the process. But it is not unheard of for some generally sort of smaller jurisdictions to maybe not accept the funding, but our 2024 jurisdictions, I think virtually everyone is taking the available funding.
Thank you.
So now moving on to what a comprehensive plan is. So your comprehensive plan is a centerpiece of local planning, articulates a series of goals, objectives, policies, actions, and standards that are intended to guide day-to-day decisions by elected officials and local government staff. The GMA specifies mandatory elements for all comprehensive plans and specific analytical and policy requirements for each of those mandatory elements. Kind of going over what makes a good plan, we think a good plan should be compelling. It must articulate a compelling sense of the community's long-term goals. It must also be flexible enough that it can be managed adaptively, but it must be firm enough that it allows a community to make the persistent efforts necessary to achieve their long-term goals. This is the vision articulated in goals and policies. It should also be realistic. Unless a plan is grounded in reality, it is not achievable. A community will either lose faith with the plan or come to regard it as something apart and separate from the day-to-day decisions. Even worse, a community can make irreversible decisions based on wishful thinking only to find it's overcommitted. It should also be specific. It should be sufficiently specific that it can guide day-to-day decisions. A good rule of thumb is the plan should force the community decision-makers to regularly confront tough issues. It should help communities regularly make decisions that are uncomfortable in the short run for the sake of achieving long-term goals. These are really the hallmarks of a good plan because they're the elements that allow you to make persistent efforts towards a long-term goal. A good plan is not about twenty years from now, it's about the decisions you'll make today and if they are moving you forward in that direction. It's not just a decision, it's a set of, it's a series of nested decisions, starting with general principles at the countywide scale down to individual project decisions. This framework helps reconcile demands for efficiency and predictability with community demands for protection of community livability. It is designed to get larger-scale issues addressed, then build on those decisions and subsequent implementation steps. So the GMA and WAC 365196 provides specific direction on the elements that must be included in the comprehensive plan and the contents of those elements. The land use element provides the layout for the community's future growth, the transportation, housing, utilities, and capital facilities elements. All must include an inventory of what is existing and identify what is needed now and to accommodate future growth. A jurisdiction may include other optional elements in the plan to meet unique local needs or preferences. These optional elements include, for example, recreation, economic development, courts, essential public facilities, climate change adaptation. Each of these elements in your plan have clear commonalities. Goals and policies articulate what the public and the decision-makers want to achieve. The element should contain relevant facts and analysis that documents the factual basis that enable or constrain your choices. And the element should contain a strategy or a set of actions that align with those facts and strategies that align with the goals and policies. So just touching on some of the optional elements you might want to include. One of the optional elements many jurisdictions may want to include is a climate element. In 2020, Commerce was asked to initiate a multi-year project that develops guidance for counties and cities to address climate change issues within their comprehensive plans with emphasis on mitigation and resilience. Right now, including a climate element is optional. All of that might change depending on what happens in the legislature. However, if it's still optional and if that's something a jurisdiction wants to include, our climate program has been hard at work producing some guidance for integrating climate into your comp plans. So your comprehensive plan should be both externally and internally consistent. By externally consistent, we mean that the plan must be consistent with the countywide planning policies and should be coordinated with plans of adjacent cities and counties. By internal consistency, we mean all elements must be based on the same future land use plan map and population projection. Finally, each jurisdiction's development regulations, planning activities, and capital budget decisions must be consistent with and implement the plan. Oh, I see another question.
You pause just for a minute. We actually have a couple of questions here.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Steve, would you like to?
Yeah, Lexi, this is Steve. Hey, I just, just... The climate guidance that Commerce was working on, is that still on track? I think it was scheduled for June, July of this year. Is that still on track?
Yeah, I think it's scheduled to be complete by the end of June of this year, and that's still, I think, the track that we're on.
Thank you. Okay. And Commissioner Desloni, go ahead. You're still muted, Commissioner. Alright.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute.
No, it's okay.
Lexine, could you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah, our climate slide?
Yeah. So you actually have two bullets in the middle that I'm interested in here to learn more about what? What about resilience and this guidance that helps communities and the second, the third bullet there to disproportionately impacted communities? What's going on on that front and are you going to have any guidance on those subjects too?
Yes, so as part of our climate team, we have one person that's focusing on working on the mitigation piece of our guidance, and then another that's focusing on the resilience piece of the guidance. And kind of within both of those, like equity and how, you know, certain communities might be disproportionately impacted is a big focus as well. So in that, Steve mentioned our June, that June 2023 deadline. That's when we aim to have this guidance out on both mitigation and resilience.
Thank you. So I understand correctly now that when you said climate, I thought that it was just bullet number four and five, but but it'll actually include one, two, and three as well.
Yeah, so that, one of these bullets is linking to the climate change website at Commerce that gives more detail about our climate program.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Hanson has a question for it.
Okay, so, sorry, was there another question?
There is, Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, just, just, just a quick one. Do you really want questions now? I was holding mine till the end. I thought that's what you said at first.
I mean, it kind of, it depends on how you guys want to run this. I think Steve told me about a like forty, forty-five minute presentation and then maybe aiming for fifteen minutes of questions. I have maybe like forty-five slides. I think I'm about halfway through them, so you know, if, if you want to ask questions as I...
Yeah, hold off, but I'd like to ask people in the live meeting to speak up because I can hear the people on Zoom, but the people in the live meeting aren't picking up very well. Thank you.
But yeah, if it's easier to jump in with questions as I go along, I don't mind.
Hi, thank you. Go ahead, Lexine.
Okay, I think I went through this slide that your plan should be consistent. So the GMA requires your local government actions to not simply be consistent with your comp plan, but also to implement it. The main way to implement your comp plan is through development regulations and spending priorities. Each jurisdiction has the flexibility to choose how to develop their comprehensive plan to include how to develop implementing regulations and capital improvement plans so they manage the way they grow and develop in a way that fits the local vision and values of the community. So the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, is implemented by development regulations. Development regulations are the specific controls placed on development or land use activities. They should be consistent with and implement your comprehensive plan. These regulations are adopted into the city's municipal code, and they are the rules that inform the what, where, and how development may occur and the process by which permit applications will be reviewed. Regulations provide predictability for developers and for community members. Development regulations also establish concurrency programs which ensure that the public facilities such as road, water, and sewer are provided in a timely manner to serve development. Capital improvement plans set priorities for infrastructure investments in roads, parks, water, and sewer service and other community needs. The capital facilities element of your comp plan should include an inventory of capital infrastructure, and it should evaluate its current needs and future needs to accommodate projected growth. The plan includes estimated costs of providing those facilities over the life of the plan with detailed financing information for the next six years. If projected revenues can't pay for needed facilities over the life of the plan, then the land use element must be reassessed. Your transportation element will also include a similar inventory of jurisdictions' transportation system and identify future projects as well as establishing levels of service consistent with regional and state transportation plans. Concurrent programs are established in development regulations to ensure that new development would not decrease a road segment or intersection below the established level of service in the comprehensive plan, for example. Level of service can be defined in many ways. Concurrent is required for transportation within six years from the time of development. If during project development review it is determined that development would decrease level of service, then that jurisdiction would need to either deny the development, require improvements to maintain level of service, or the level of service needs to be reassessed in your comprehensive plan. Countywide planning policies shape regional policy. So developed by a county and all the cities within, these policies help to ensure that plans within a county are consistent with one another and work together to manage regional growth. Countywide planning policies may include means to allocate population targets for individual cities to include in their comprehensive plans, a mechanism for counties to designate urban growth areas. Some counties have chosen to assign future annexation areas to adjacent cities. Policies that address the sighting of public facilities of a countywide or statewide nature such as wastewater treatment facilities, highways, prisons, or airports. And that also may include policies to address the need for affordable housing. And they may include other locally important regional issues such as economic development or other associated policies. I know, for example, Watcom, the City-County Planning Group has a subcommittee working on your countywide planning policies amendments in association with your comp plan update. Under the GMA, urban growth areas contain most of the new growth. UGA size is based on the twenty-year countywide population projections from OFM. Once the growth targets are set, then the process really focuses on the overall strategy for how to accommodate the growth. Your comprehensive plan will define the specifics of your growth strategy. A cooperative countywide process will allocate population growth to cities and to unincorporated urban and rural areas. This exercise may be based on space, water supply, sewer, desire to grow, other facilities that conserve growth like transit centers. The cities then decide how to plan for the allocated growth. Cities and counties must consider reasonable measures before expanding a UGA. If you are doing an analysis of your urban growth areas and potentially thinking about reconfiguring them, this is what the process would look like. I'm not going to go through this, all these steps. But this kind of provides an overview of what you might consider when modifying a UGA. I know that the Watcom City-County Coordination Group has a subcommittee kind of drafting a schedule for looking at doing a review of your UGAs as part of your comp plan update process. This slide lists new legislation through 2022. So there was a lot of work done in last year's session to invest in aiding growth management and address the problems many of our communities are facing. These new bills cover kind of a range of new housing requirements, bills addressing kind of some added flexibility in UGA expansions, changes to some definitions, and then including tribal participation and local and regional planning. I'm going to talk more about a couple of these key new legislation points, but we have reports on kind of all of these new GMA bills from last year. And then we're also tracking a number of GMA-associated bills in the current legislative session, and we'll continue to provide updates on that legislation as session continues. So I want to touch on 1717, which House last year went into effect of June of last year. It changed six sections of the GMA and created a framework for tribal participation in the growth management planning process. And then one of the other big areas that was changed by new legislation is the housing element requirements and also as part of the housing element addressing racial equity. So House Bill 1220 was signed into law in 2021, and it made some pretty significant changes to the GMA housing goal. Instead of the softer "encourage affordable housing," communities are now required to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. Communities are now directed to take more action to achieve their housing needs. So this bill required Commerce to provide specific projections of housing need for low and moderate income segments and for emergency housing and permanent supportive housing needs. We're providing those numbers at county level to be consistent with the way OFM provides population projections. These requirements of the local housing element also include consideration of moderate-density housing options, sufficient land capacity for all housing needs, identification of the barriers to housing availability, and consideration of ADUs and the location of housing in relation to employment. So as I mentioned, Commerce will be projecting future housing needs by income bracket at a countywide level. The income bands are noted on the right-hand side of the screen and include emergency housing and shelters and permanent supportive housing, which are part of the lowest-income bands. We've been working hard to produce, to build a housing need projection model that considers ways to plan to reduce cost burden in lower-income segments, plan for workforce housing, considers equity and regional balance. Our team has considered a variety of data sources and worked with local demographers to develop projections for special housing needs. Focus groups were held to get input on who is not captured in existing data and what drives trends in homelessness. So our guidance will include recommendations for allocating these countywide projections to cities and the county. The recommendations and the model can be adjusted to address buildable lands capacity, current disparities in the location of affordable housing, jobs, and transit service. Another thing to be aware of is that the housing numbers might be higher than you expect because we're considering things like underproduction and cost burden. Most of the increased projections will be at the lower-income bands, which will need to be planned for and accommodated in higher... which will need to be planned for and accommodated in higher density areas. So you might think about where middle housing is acceptable, or if there are like strip commercial areas that might be ripe for redevelopment. So to assist counties and cities with this work, we've been working on developing an allocation tool, um, which we're ca- calling the Housing for All Planning Tool or HAP. Um, this tool is an Excel spreadsheet and includes the housing needs, projections for all counties. Um, so you can use it to allocate projected countywide housing needs among all jurisdictions in your county. This will allow counties to customize the share of growth the jurisdiction will be receiving and therefore to take the consideration, um, to take into consideration the work that you'll be doing in regard to population targets. So this is kind of a example of what the tool can provide. It's a um snapshot of what it provides at the countywide level. Um, so you have a choice of population projections, high, medium, or low, um, based on the numbers from OFM. So based on growth patterns and local knowledge, Watcom County can choose a future population target anywhere between the low and high projection. So then using the number that you select, um, you can calculate the housing need by income band for your county. The total number of housing uh units for each income band must be accommodated somewhere in the county. Um, so beware that for anything under eighty percent um of area media, median income, you're probably going to need multifamily attached or manufactured housing to reach those affordability targets. Emergency housing needs are separate from and in addition to the permanent housing needs. Um, so these housing needs are for short-term housing when individuals lose how to housing due to foreclosure, rent changes, health reasons, um, unexpected emergencies, et cetera. So we have those separate under that emergency housing um column. And then, so you have your numbers on the countywide level, and then you can use our tool to allocate the growth um to cities within your county. So this is just an example of how the housing allocation might work. I put in some example numbers, um, kind of based on your last buildable lands report analysis. But, you know, you can choose to, Watcom County can choose to allocate this, these um population numbers, however you think is most appropriate. Um, so it, you, you, you put in the, the input that each community would be allocated, and then it kind of pops out, um, the project, the permanent housing needs by income level for each of those counties. So it's kind of doing the sub-allocation to each community for you. Um, so what are the next steps for cities and counties to comply with House Bill twelve twenty and these new housing requirements? Uh, cities and counties will need to agree on allocations of those countywide projected housing needs by income level. We recommend the framework for dividing up housing need be consistent with the process that's already used for population targets and incorporated into your countywide planning policies, which I think Watcom County is already planning um to do. Oh. Oops. Sorry about that. Um, so local governments will need to make sure that you have enough capacity for the housing typologies that will serve the housing needs by income level allotted. Um, you'll also need to make assumptions about the types of housing that will be affordable for each income bracket and adjust your zoning accordingly. Many of the housing needs will be at the lower income levels. Um, so you might, there might be a need to zone more land for multifamily, middle housing, or mid-scale development to accommodate these housing needs. Um, so you're, you would make any associated zoning changes that you need, um, that would be part of your periodic update process. Um, communities are, will also be required to document programs and actions needed to achieve housing availability, including gaps in local funding, barriers such as development regulations and other limitations. We expect um that this might point to other revisions and programs, fee structures, or permitting processes um, and incentives that might help each community accommodate these housing needs. So our housing team is going to provide guidance that will walk jurisdictions through how you might do this review and what actions um you might need to take to help achieve gaps in housing availability. Um, and of course, you'd need to update your comprehensive plan policies and development regulations to be consistent with these new requirements. So House Bill twelve twenty also requires communities to address disparate impacts, displacement, and inclusion in housing. Um, our housing team is writing guidance on how to help jurisdictions identify the types of zonings or, or other policies that might have had a discriminatory effect, such as redlining or large lot developments, um, and where to get data to review racial impacts and provide example policies that can kind of begin to undo these racially disparate impacts, displacement, and inclusion. Um, another area uh to look at is where past infrastructure investment decisions may have displaced vulnerable communities by requiring people to move or make way for a new road, for example, um, or the impact of gentrification as a new station area, raised property values, impacts like that. Um, some potential policies may be increasing uses and densities in areas of large lots, or considering infrastructure investments with an equity lens, such as considering areas that might have had less infrastructure investment and where parks and trails can help um provide amenities. Um, we included a, a um photo of the book, The Color of Law: Forgotten History of How Our Government Segregated America. Um, it's an eye-opening account of how housing segregation and discrimination had a negative impact on communities throughout the nation. But this is sort of what this um section of, of twelve twenty is trying to get communities to consider. Um, so we understand that's a lot of new requirements for the housing element. Um, it's also a huge opportunity to better plan for housing. Uh, we have a lot of resources on our housing webpage, many of which were still in the process of updating. We have um Housing Action Plan Guidance that has a lot of resources for considering updates to plans, including a broad variety of housing strategies. Uh, we've recorded a housing short course, but we're also going to update it to reflect new requirements. Um, we've been hosting kind of a series of, of webinars, um, and then updating our housing element guidance, and then working on that projection tool for the housing needs. Um, I should also mention our housing team is also very happy to give kind of deeper dive presentations into some of these topics and how you're using the um housing tool. I'm actually presenting at the Watcom City-County um group tomorrow with someone from our housing team to talk about our housing allocation tool a little bit more. So we're, we're more than happy to, you know, give additional guidance and presentation, presentations on these housing issues because we do know that they're very complex. So, once you've completed your comprehensive plan update, um, each jurisdiction's code will have a specific process for amending and adopting the comprehensive plan. Prior to adoption, sixty-day notice must be provided to Commerce. Um, Commerce and other agencies do not approve plans. They're valid, they're considered valid upon adoption. However, we may point out areas of inconsistency or risk, or provide support for commendable decisions. Your transportation element will also be certified by regional transportation organizations to ensure consistency with the regional transportation plan. So your comp plan can only be amended um once per year, and it must be updated every ten years with a schedule. It is appealable within sixty days to a Regional Growth Management Hearings Board by anyone who has standing or who commented in the adoption process. So while the GMA allows direct review by the courts, rather than have GMA disputes proceed directly to the court, it goes to the Growth Management Hearing Board. Um, and the Growth Management Hearings Board is established to hear and determine allegations that a city, county, or state agency has not complied with the goals or requirements of the GMA, um, kind of in order to shorten that um appeal time process. So updating your comprehensive plan is not the only step in the periodic update process. Um, jurisdictions need to complete all three phases of the periodic update to be eligible for these state grant and loan programs listed. Um, so in addition to reviewing and updating your comprehensive plan, kind of the other two phases are reviewing and revising your associated development regulations, and then reviewing and revising your critical areas ordinance. So we talked a little bit about development regulations earlier. Um, just want to mention, in addition to reviewing and revising those development regulations, all counties and cities must also review and update, if necessary, your critical areas regulations. Um, you, under the Growth Management Act, you do have an additional year to complete the critical areas phase of the update. Um, so you must include best available science in your CAO update. We have a lot of resources to help you with the critical areas update, um, including an updated checklist and an updated guidance, uh, guidebook. We also strongly encourage you to reach out to state agencies associated with critical areas, such as the Department of Ecology, WDFW, as they have a lot of staff that can help you um with the process as well. Um, so kind of as mentioned, Commerce, we have a multitude of uh resources to help you with your periodic update. You're also always welcome to reach out to me with any questions. Um, that was a lot of information tonight packed into a short amount of time, and I just wanted to highlight some other sources of information. I want to especially highlight um the Passport to Two Thousand and Forty-four Periodic Update Workshop Series that was um kind of running with the two thousand and twenty-four update jurisdictions. So it's a joint effort between Commerce, PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, and MRSC. Uh, it's a series of webinars, kind of doing deeper dives into um each element of the periodic update process such as housing, housing, transportation, tribal coordination, critical areas, et cetera. Um, all webinars are recorded and the slides are on the website. MRC is another great resource, um, answering kind of a range of questions from local governments on a variety of topics, including land use planning. Um, so tonight I attempted to give you a condensed version of our short course on local planning, which is normally a three-hour course. Um, if you're interested in learning more, we do host these virtual short courses monthly on Zoom, and you can sign up on our website. Um, the next two options, we have one on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, and one on Thursday, March twenty-third. Um, we also have a guidebook that you can download that goes along with that course. And then we have some um videos that you can watch of certain sections of that course. So I know that was a lot of information. Thanks so much for your attention. Happy to take any questions. I see a hand from Jen.
Okay, I know this presentation is broadly applicable to multiple jurisdictions, but I immediately a contradiction jumps out at me between the goals of the GMA in terms of preventing uh the impacts of rural sprawl and the goal of, of providing a uh appropriate and adequate housing for growing population. And what I'm kind of wondering is, what kind, what sort of role a count, a county government will have when it only has jurisdiction under unincorporated areas where we're not supposed to be putting more people? Yeah, two things about that. One is, I don't believe that we have uh, the ability to start doing planning in UGAs that there are still UG, UGAs because cities that be annexing them. And the other one is, to your knowledge, how many counties in Washington do not have impact fees?
Um, let's see, impact fees, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I could try to follow up with that. I'll rate myself a no.
Thanks.
Um, and yeah, you do bring up a great point that, you know, I, I went through all of our new housing requirements, um, but a lot of those, when counties are looking at, um, so it is a joint process of how you're allocating those uh, population numbers and those housing needs between the county and then the cities within the county. So that is going to be something that, you know, Watcom County is participating in as part of that countywide planning policies process. Um, but you're right, the cities and areas within UGAs are going to need to accommodate a lot of that growth. Um, and in order to not, you know, expand UGAs, a lot of cities or existing UGAs might have to look at upzoning or increasing density. Because yes, we, the goal of the GMA is not to encourage sprawl and have more housing in rural areas. It's to concentrate that housing in the areas where there are needs for it and where there are services and where it's the most efficient. Um, but yeah, the county is participating in that kind of housing allocation process as a, a joint process with the cities within Watcom County. Because, you know, you're updating your comp plan in two thousand and twenty-five, but also so are all the cities within Watcom County. So it's kind of, that, that's part of the idea of, of your comp plan being consistent kind of with your internal policies, but then also with, you know, the cities within your county.
And maybe, like I said, if I can just add, uh, Commissioner Hanson. So, as you might recall, we looked at the build, buildable lands report here a couple of months ago. Watcom County has an allocation of sixteen percent of the growth, the residential growth. That is our, our goal. And we, we hit that pretty close during that last planning period for what the buildable lands analysis showed us. There's different ways that we can kind of, we work on that, right? That's, that's partially through our zoning code, is how we zone property. Watcom County does have two, there are TUGAs, urban growth areas within Watcom County that are not associated with cities, Bird Bay and Columbia Valley, where we do have urban growth areas where we have that denser development occurring. Um, and so it's, it's all of those pieces together, along with working with the cities, that we try to get a balance that urban-rural development. It's not, it's not easy. And we'll be talking a lot about it over the next, uh, next couple of years.
Are there any other questions for Lexine?
So I want to follow up on that. Uh, when we, when we reviewed the buildable lands uh program, it wasn't clear to me, actually, to the extent we were allocating the future, that we have a chance within our comp plan update to modify that balance of rural versus urban growth.
Yes, that will be a point of conversation that, that, and maybe I wasn't clear here, the buildable lands report is looking backwards, not looking forwards. And so that was looking back at how we had done based upon our last um allocation, last, or plan. But moving forward, we will be talking about that through our two thousand and twenty-five. We'll have those new allocations that Lexine was talking about, and we'll have to figure out where those are going in the county, what the cities are getting, and that'll be a, a, a joint process with all of us trying to figure out. And don't worry, you guys will be involved in this. Where, where those are going and how that's going to look.
Well, yeah, I'm hearing about this, this committee, but I'm wondering to what extent they're dispowering Planning Commission in making decisions about the allocation.
Yeah, no, that, it will be something you guys talk about. Uh, the committee that Lexine was talking about is the, the Planner Group, and that is made up of uh, planners from all the different jurisdictions that get together and talk about like the, the countywide planning policies. And then those come back, come back to you guys and to the, to the um councils um, to the cities as well as to the county council. Is that, sorry, did I answer your question, Jim? Did I answer or did I, did I talk around?
Extremely well, thank you.
Commissioner Deslantis.
Uh, there's parts of this question that uh uh, will be probably best addressed by staff. But while we still have you, Lexine, uh, I just wanted to ask, from your uh experience, how uh is there roles of this birth management update divvied up between Planning Commission and County Council?
Um, yeah, I think that's something that might be better for Steve to address. Um, I mean, there are often commonalities between how jurisdictions balance, you know, the work between staff uh, working on, on policies and kind of the more technical aspects and them bringing it before the Planning Commission for feedback.
Yeah, I think the quick answer to your, to your question, Commissioner Desmonte, is that the planning commission is recommending body. And uh, really generally tasked with doing a lot of that heavy lifting, technical, more technical analysis and then bringing it to the council, more of a finished product. And hopefully that.
Well, here's why I'm asking the question, because I know that the county council, uh, and busy council members I've talked to have been working on this now for over a year.
Yeah, I think what they, what they produced, you know, they, they produced the uh, the resolution with a bunch of uh, a lot of stuff in it. Um, and we'll be talking uh, more about that as we start to put together the um, the scope for what that update is going to look like, more of those details. And so I think it'll be a, I don't know exactly what that process is going to look like, but I think there'll be probably some back and forth with the commission and the council as far as what the work program looks like, uh, what's, what's in that, what's out of that. So I, I think that's going to be a kind of a iterative process before we get to the, to a.
Yeah, I don't know if it's too much to ask, but if there was some kind of a flow chart that showed how you plan this whole thing to to, you know, wh- what the council will work on and what the planning commission will work on. Ultimately, everything goes back to the council, but just so that we have a picture of how we're fitting into the bigger picture of review and adoption um, of this.
Yeah, and it, it actually is more complicated than that. Yes, that is, that is something that we're working on. There's, we've identified based upon the council resolution from a few months ago, we've identified about thirty different groups. Um, it, that, that problem that we need to evolve in this conversation. Um, and so it, yeah, it, it gets bigger than that, uh, but it's all, should funnel back through the planning commission and then ultimately to the council. But, but yeah, there's a lot of pieces here and we are putting putting that together, but we don't have it finished yet because we don't have all of those details figured out yet.
But, but, um, just to be clear that, um, even work that happens from like the uh, other committees, advisory committees to the council. Um, it, pretty much everything will have to either go through the planning commission or the county council, um, somewhere along the way.
E- everything will need to go through the council?
Yes, yeah. And some of that will go through the planning commission first.
Correct.
Yeah. And I'm just curious how you're giving that up.
Yeah, that, that is, that is a big question. Uh, anyways, anyways, have you on my mind, we are, we like say, we're, we're working on it, uh, but how that, yeah. We, we, you will be one of the, you will be one of the first groups uh, to know what that looks like, uh, what's, you know what that looks like.
Yeah, I, I guess you may have covered this in generous, I apologize if I'm asking the question you've already answered and that is that you know, in our work plan for the next, sounds like two years, two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This is going to be a, a big portion of the work plan for the planning commission for twenty-three. And I'm just wondering how much of the bandwidth of planning commission will be focused on this?
The majority of it. Uh, probably not so much initially. Um, we, we see some ramp up time. Uh, so as Lexine mentioned, the uh, we anticipate that the state funding will become available in July of this year. Uh, and we anticipate hiring a consultant to assist with this. Uh, we have, as you probably know, the council approved the addition of one long range planner for us. We're in the process of, um, we're just beginning the process of looking for that, for that individual, though those, that uh, was effective uh, January one, so we're, we're looking for that. Uh, we're going to be looking for that position soon, uh, and, and those things will, will key into that. Uh, but yes, it will be probably, um, we'll start to talk about work programs in the next few months. Uh, and then, you know, you won't start to see product probably until later in the year, but um, again, it, all, all that's being worked out now as we speak.
Okay, well, thank you. That really helps me because um, one of the things that you answered for me is whether I should sign up for that follow on three hour thing, um, and I'm, I'm kind of favoring investing the time if it's going to be that much of the agenda for the next couple of years.
Yeah, it's going to be huge and, and I'll mention this, we, uh, Commerce actually came and did that, Lexine, uh, I think Valerie came last year, uh, right?
Oh, yeah.
Did a, a more of a formula deal, um, for us. I don't know if you remember that, uh, Commissioner Desmonte, but um. But yeah, no, it's always, always worth it. Uh, I, I, I've seen a few of them, uh, and they're, they're great. Commerce does a great job and um, one of the great things they do, um, sorry, this is my, 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 my commerce sell point, uh. Not out of me yet, Lexine, I still have some commerce in me. Um. They ca- cater them often and they can be very specific. I guess Lexine, you heard this conversation to us. And they'll focus on different topics. Um, like she mentioned, they, they've got one on housing. Um, and they do them on, they can do them on different topics. And so it, it is, it's not bad to go look at their website. They've got, I think, several different, um, uh, short courses that are focused on.
Yeah, and like, like you said, Steve, we're happy to, you know, tailor anything that, that you want, or we're happy to come back, um. And do a deeper dive on anything if you would like. Um, and I also just want to plug again that passport, the twenty forty-four series um, that we've been working on with the Puget Sound Regional Council and MRSC. It was kind of specific to the Puget Sound region, um, that's working on their, their update, which is due in twenty twenty-four, but a lot of it is still really relevant to, you know, to, to you, um, with the twenty twenty-five, um, deadline, so that, that those, we have a lot of really great web, webinars that kind of do a deeper dive into the, the update process in each subject area. And I'm sure Steve or someone else could send, send out that link directly or I could forward it to, to someone.
Yes, cer- certainly if folks are interested, let me, let me know. I'm happy to send that out. I've attended many of them. I don't think, I think I've missed a few, but they're, they're really good, uh, if you're, want to get into that. Uh, the other piece I'll, I'll, I'll point out is the legislative session is still in session. Uh, and there's some, there's some stuff working through there that, um, like, like Steve said, they're watching, we're watching, uh, we're all watching to see what comes out of that. Um, so that may necessitate some additional changes or modifications also.
Yeah, definitely. And as, as I mentioned, we're, we're tracking a lot of things, we're doing analysis, um. And once, once we see what happens, what passes, you know, we're going to be sending out, um. Every year after legislative session, we send out a special edition of our newsletter that kind of summarizes all the new legislation and and the impacts that it will have to, to planning. So that's definitely something that will keep you all updated on.
Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
And this is just request for staff as a follow up on what it, uh, Commissioner Desmonte indicated to be useful for us to have a gap chart or a flow chart. So we could understand this complicated process, but I'm requesting that as part of the community engagement plan, that there be a similar tool that will allow citizens and citizen associations to provide input during the formative uh, stages of all of these regulations and plans, because uh, generally what I've found is that citizens get engaged sort of at the last minute, whereas if they would have engaged three months before, they would have had a lot more power helping to shape the policies. Because they don't know that a public hearing is basically when everything is just about done. They think a public hearing is where they should get engaged, but actually they should get engaged in the work sessions. So I'd appreciate it, I think it'd be a, a benefit of democracy if you all provide uh, some sort of chart in your website for citizen involvement and perhaps a PowerPoint explaining how people can effectively be involved.
Yes, well, well said, Commissioner Hanson. We, we do plan on, on doing that. Um, we have a, a, a bit of a dated GAN chart that I can fight back, but it's outdated. Like I said, we're working on updating that. Um, and, and as I mentioned before, we've identified about thirty groups that, that we need to coordinate with through this process. Um, and by meeting with the first of those, uh, towards this month, I'm going to be with the planning, the planning unit. Um, and, and start having those conversations, but, but yes, it will be, uh, the public engagement will be huge. This process is just starting, right? We're two years and a bit more out before we need to be completed, but yes, it will be a big public participation.
Commissioner Desmonte.
Firstly, I apologize that this is turning a little bit into the gym at a tool show. So sorry about that. I, but I just wanted to uh, echo the comment and then I say that when we get the public involved early on, it, it really works well from my perspective because then we get them to ask the right questions. You know, staff and those on, at council and planning commission um, can do a better job when we get the public's involvement on the front end rather than on the backend. And I just wanted to emphasize, and that puts more responsibility on staff in terms of figuring out how to get their input upfront. I acknowledge that. But it, it leads to better outcomes, I think.
Do we have any more uh, questions for Lexine? Thank you, Lexine. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, thanks for inviting me tonight and my contact information is up here. Feel free to reach out anytime. Um, we have a wealth of resources on our website and again, always happy to come back. Um, answer any questions or do presentations on additional subjects. So, thank you. Have a good night.
So we are to unfinished business, sorry, any unfinished, unfinished business? No unfinished business, any new business? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Goodbye, Kelly.
There you go, Robert.